We've got a busy agenda tonight. We'll hop right in. Any comments from the general public this evening? Seeing none. Actually, it's not on the agenda this evening. But we do have our representatives from the Student Council and Captain's Council. So why don't we start with the Student Council? I believe you're here. Come on up.
You can pull up another chair, Tristan.
Yes, grab that one for you. You're welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. So my name is Tristan Marshall, and I'm the Vice President of the Executive Board.
I'm Gigi Tracy. I'm the Secretary.
So we're just going to be talking about some past events that we've done in the near past, and then some future events that are going to be coming up real soon.
So just recently, we attended the Half Day Stay-in Play. The Third Annual Elementary Half Day Stay-in Play was held on the District Half Day, January 8th, 2014, at Carver Elementary School. The event was a two-part program that gave high school students the opportunity to go to the elementary classrooms and work with the classroom teachers for a couple hours. This opportunity enabled high school leaders to build relationships with the elementary students and participate in class activities, including learning centers, gym, and music classes, and even just help teachers organize their classrooms during free time. Twenty high school student councils participated in the event that had 106 elementary students attend. At 12:00 PM, all the elementary school students who had stayed at school and attended the event had fun playing games, making crafts, and eating yummy Mamma Mia's pizza. This event had grown in popularity each year, and Student Council is very thankful to all teachers and staff who support the event each year.
Great. And then some future events that we have coming up. On Thursday, January 21st, Student Council will be running a volleyball tournament in partnership with the high school's Captain's Council. This event is held from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the high school half-day that is coming up, and is a competitive opportunity for high school students to play competitive co-ed volleyball with the winning team playing against a faculty team during the Spirit Week pep rally. Also, we have mid-year exams which are coming up at the high school from January 21st to the 24th, which is next week. Student Council is planning a stress-free week to help students relieve some of the stress of the mid-year exam period. Some events potentially include themed school days. So on Monday, it will be Hot Chocolate... this is the week after mid-year, just so you know. So on Monday, it will be Hot Chocolate Day, which is passed out during breakfast or lunches, either or. Tuesday is Pajama Day, and then there's going to be a student raffle prize during homeroom. On Wednesday and Thursday at lunches, there's going to be a Spread the Word to End the Word campaign. Student Council has taken a pledge to spread the word to stop the misuse derogatory use of the word retarded at Carver High School. At lunch, we will ask all students in grades 9 through 12 to take a stand against using the R-word by signing a banner to stop using the word. The goal is to have all students pledge to be inclusive and raise awareness with harmful ideas. And then Friday, we have free musical entertainment at lunch. And then finally, on January 26th, the Carver High School Student Council is attending a Special Olympics Polar Plunge in Winthrop that our council is considering in attending and participating to help raise awareness for the Special Olympics. We raised $300 from the Mr. Crusader Event, which we held in December, and we hope to attend and have Student Council members to attend this event. And we're going to jump in the ocean at Euro Beach in Winthrop, Mass. And all of that money that we raised is going to the program, so.
Great.
Can you be nice to the teachers when you play the volleyball game? Because I don't want any of them mad.
I think they've actually won once or twice, yeah.
Are you playing, Scott?
Yes.
He plays every year.
With surgically repaired knees, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll invite up the Captain's Council.
So my name is Zachary Bender, and I am on part of Captain's Council, and I am captain of the basketball team and captains of the baseball team.
I'm Tommy Catos, captain of the baseball team.
And just what we want to talk about is like the events that are happening now and that stuff that like the boosters and the team will be doing in the future. So just something that just happened recently. Everybody knows that we have the annual holiday tournament for basketball, and we actually won it again for the third year in a row. And that's like, it's a big deal. It's like school history. It's the first time under Coach King, I believe, is what he said, that we've actually won it three years in a row. And it was also a big deal because of the fact that we beat Middleboro, and then we beat Plymouth North. And everyone knows Plymouth North is a big school, and they're Division II, and we're Division IV. But just the fact that we won, we were 0-3 leading up to that tournament. So coming back, winning those two games, it's given us a spark, and we've gone 3-1 in our past four games. So it's helping us out. And James Fraser, another captain, another one of our captains, actually won the MVP of the tournament. And girls' basketball, playing a similar tournament, and they lost their first game to Pembroke, but they did win their consolation game against Sacred Heart. So that's a good thing. That's getting them off with a win. And a big accomplishment to one of the players in my grade, Aiden McGrath on the wrestling team, he's their captain. He just recently got his 100th win against Coacid. It was a pin, and might add, it was pretty awesome. He picked the kid up and dropped him. It was awesome. And the Carver Athletic Booster Club, we're hosting a bingo night in the cafeteria on Thursday, January 16th. Goes from 7:00 to 10:00. And the prizes, each of the prizes have been donated by the different winter sports teams. And just the other three sports teams we have are, they're Carver, two of them are Carver and Wareham co-ops. So we got Wrestling, which are Carver and Wareham, and they're doing pretty well. And Hockey, who started off a little rough, but they've been doing a lot well lately. They just won their last game. And Gymnastics, they're 0-3 in the league, but they are improving daily. And just last thing, just, we want you to follow us on Twitter. It's @CarverCrusader with a capital C and a capital C. And that's all.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And many more wins.
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we'd like to welcome comments from the APC. Yes, as students know, we won't hold you if you have homework. Feel free to go.
I don't know if that's fear. I'm going to have to talk to Mr. Schultz about Plymouth playing Carver, because that's a real problem for me.
Torn allegiance, yes.
You know, it's the Plymouth-Carver...
As long as Carver wins, it's okay.
Tonight, yes, it's okay.
You can't lose, right?
People in Plymouth don't pay any attention. I don't know if you're aware, but Plymouth-Carver Educators is one of the large local task force for the MTA. And as the president of over 1,270 members, I get invited in with, you know, the president and the vice president, and a lot of the large local presidents are there, including, you know, Springfield, Worcester, things like that. And we went last week, and things are tough across the state. It's really, really tough. The morale is down. Massachusetts is number one in testing, yet we're going to try to change all of these things, even though we're meeting with success. A lot of district-determined measures are being practiced. The teachers don't know where that's going to end up. It's just a new evaluation program is in place, and it just seems like there are an awful lot of things on the educators' plates. And on top of that, one of the superintendents came up with five pages of non-funded mandates that are now in effect, and school systems like Carver have to somehow or other come up with the funds to be able to fill those mandates. And not all of them, you know, apply directly to the students. So it's very, very difficult out there. And I want to congratulate Carver with all the results of all the things that they did during the last meeting for being able to pull off, you know, such high standards and such great things that are happening, include, you know, with the decreases in the budgets and all of these other mandates. So I think that the students are going to have a stress-free week. I think maybe everybody should think about a stress-free day. Well, only as for one day, for all of the people that are involved in the education system in Carver. Because really, it's not easy, but they're doing it, and everybody should really recognize that and congratulate them for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. With that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes from the December 9th regular session meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from December 9th, 2013, regular session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion about the meeting? Minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous.
I abstained. I wasn't here.
Yes, with one abstention. Sorry, Paul.
It's okay.
With that, we'll move on to Communications.
Mr. Doug, I believe I'm saying his name right, sent us a communication in August about issues around the Common Core that some groups in Massachusetts are addressing. And he again has sent us another piece of information that there will be, there was an information session on January 9th, and Mitchell Chester was there. So we agreed that we, he brought the copies, and we agreed to distribute them. Then you have our enrollment, which we provide you every month, but talk about only every other month, so it doesn't provide a burden. Elementary school is growing, where we started the year with 838 students in-house and one out of district. On January 1st, we had 842 students in the school and one out of district. At the middle high school, we started with 878, and 14 out, and now out of district placement. And now we have 862 plus 16 out. Some of this is movement from in the classroom to out of district. Some of this is, well, you can see the migration report. We have a lot of migration, a lot of in and outs, particularly between September at the high school, where we isn't determined how many kids have gone to private school or how many kids have gone to vocational school. So it sort of settles out by the 1st of January. So that's some enrollment report. And I would like to point out that we are at 1721, and the MSBA said we'd be at 1722 this year. So they were pretty much right on target for our population. So we are, we had a slow decline, and now we're having a slow incline. And then it'll level off again, so that's where we are. We have a NEAS special progress report. Scott, would you like to make some comments about the progress report?
Sure.
It just highlights what we said we'd address.
Yeah, yeah, no, I obviously have seen it before. I wasn't sure if I wanted to present.
Not a presentation, just, yeah.
No, so obviously, in terms of some of the NEAS recommendations that came forward for us, we've made some real progress on achieving those recommendations. They asked us to do a one-year report on some particular areas of interest, specifically the Library and Media Center. They wanted to see us increase our staffing in that area. So, and we have. So we've added a paraprofessional into Library and Media Center, which provides more supports for the students during the regular school day. Actually, also opens up the library to be open for a longer period during the day after school, because with the para there, the library is open every day after school until 3:00 o'clock. It also asked us to look specifically in terms of how we were using our school-wide rubrics and how we were building our common assessments. And we spent some very specific time on building common assessments as a school and trying to integrate using our school-wide rubrics in terms of supporting all of those common assessments. We were also looked, asked to look at different areas in terms of the facility. And there was a facility study done over the summer, which they're asking, one of the recommendations they're looking for in the future is, do they want to see that report? So they're asking us to give us the detailed information that was found out through the facilities report that was done. And then also, they're asking us as we go forward to address our concern in the guidance area. So the other area in which they thought that maybe we were short of staff was in the middle school guidance office. Currently, at this time, there's not an administrative assistant who works full-time in that guidance office, and they're asking us to report back on our progress in terms of adding staff into that area. So in terms of going forward, there's two areas they want us to look at, which is the facility, and those facility concerns, we might have like a new roof, and a lot of those things were addressed through the facilities report that was done over the summer. And then also increasing our staff in the guidance area. And we had made progress on several of the recommendations that they had made for us going into the year. At the end of this year, I have to do a detailed two-year progress report on every recommendation that was given to the school. So that's a little bit more extensive. So that'll be part of my work over the summer, as we'll go through each individual recommendation and report our current progress on achieving those recommendations. And some of them, we'll say maybe no or little action has been taken, and in other areas, we'll say that we've, you know, we've made some strong, strong progress.
Thank you.
So it's kind of a summary of where we are. I don't know if there's any specific questions from the report itself.
With just the letter, you know, so, and we have made extreme progress with the internet.
Sorry, I see the one big thing I was forgetting was technology. So one of the other major recommendations for us was in the area of technology. And so we are in the progress of updating our infrastructure so that we have access for everyone who enters the building through technology. And we've also upgraded our technology in terms of adding 180 iPads to the middle high school. So over the past year, there's been a lot of effort and time to put into upgrading the technology within the middle high school facility. And then also now, at this point, shifting towards giving the teachers the training necessary to implement that technology. And that was a clear recommendation in the report that has been addressed since the NEAS Visiting Committee came up.
Yep. So thank you.
We're right on track with NEAS, and, you know, there will be things we can't address
because I'm not sure we'll get the roof done by 2015.
Right.
But we do now have a plan to address it, so thank you. Then next up, is my report?
Yes, your report.
So Scott, I thought you could introduce your students, the dual enrollment. Last year, I made it my goal as your superintendent to provide up more opportunities for students to seek college readiness and also experience a college course or two when they were in high school. And we made this possible through a grant from Makepeace, gave us $8,000 to make sure that this could happen for every student. And we have some students to report how it's worked out for them.
Yep. And then I'll talk a little bit about afterwards, after the presentation, I'll talk a little bit about where I feel some of the benefits of the program and what we're doing in the future. So we are offering another course this semester, and I'll talk about that a little bit. So we're very glad, there are six students who took a course this fall. Four of them are here this evening. And we actually had several students take a course over the summer as well. So we had four students take a course on the summer. So this evening, we have Madison Walker, Andrew Shawin, Joshua Mallon, and Cole Harrington, who are here to talk about their experiences taking a human communications course this fall that was offered in our building on Saturday mornings. And we'll give them the opportunity to cover it.
Pull up as many chairs as you need.
Okay, I'm Andrew, and I was one of the members of the dual enrollment program that was held at Carver this past semester. And first of all, we'd like to start by thanking the superintendent, the Carver School Board, and especially Mr. Neef, and all the administration at Cape Cod Community College, because it was a great experience, and we know they put a lot of work into making it happen for us, and we're very appreciative that we were able to do it. So basically, what it is, is it's a course that is a mix of a high school classroom and a college classroom. And it's taught by a college professor from the 4Cs Community College. And they came down to Carver on, every Saturday morning, and we had a three-hour class. Our class was human communications. We learned things like speech giving. Cole's going to talk more in-depth about our actual class. But basically, what we want to do is we want to get the word out about how it was really beneficial to us. It helped us advance our learning in different ways. We got to experience college. And there is another class coming up next semester. It's a business-related class, and we want to make sure that other students and the faculty know how really beneficial it was to us. And we'd like everyone who's interested to apply.
I'm Madison, and I'm going to talk about some of the benefits that we, as a class, received from taking this course. And one of the, like, huge ones that kids like was that it takes a lot of stress off your senior year. It counts as a, like, as high school and college credit. So you have credits already on your college transcript and on your high school transcript as well. And also, like, taking this class and with the grant and everything, it's free, so it saves families and you personally, about $1,000 per class. So you can put that towards future classes that you're going to have to pay for. And this course gives you an actual college experience with a teacher and in a college setting, and also with the work. So it's really beneficial.
Thank you, Madison.
I'm Cole, and from the human communications course that we took, some of the more specific benefits of like the actual class was, were that with human communications, like, I think it's one of the reasons why all of us really took the classes, because no matter, like, really what profession you're pursuing in life, like, it's always going to involve, like, you communicating with your peers. And that's why we thought that human communications would be like an essential course to take, because it can help you throughout the rest of your life, no matter what you do. Thank you.
Well, I'm Josh, and we did a whole bunch more than just human communications. We got to actually help out firsthand in the community with the Ediville rail run over this November. And it gave us a chance to work on our human communication skills with people in and out of the community as a whole, which I thought was a great opportunity.
Thank you, Josh.
And all of us gained these skills from the class, like the communicating skills. So I know personally, I can say for myself that I would not be sitting in front of all of you guys if I didn't take the class and gain these skills.
Yep. So in the end, it was really beneficial, both academically and credit-wise, and also financially, and we're thankful that we got to do it. We're definitely looking forward to doing it again next semester.
Great.
Are you all going to take the course next semester?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Great.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
We're very proud of you. Good work.
Well, we had four students attend in the summer, too. And I don't want to add a lot to what they say, because they did a great job. But I'd like to thank all of them, because they were kind of the pathsetters in terms of taking the chance and taking the risk of taking a dual enrollment course. We've always had dual enrollment in our program of studies. And ultimately, another benefit of dual enrollment is it offers a wide variety of courses. Students have the opportunity to take a course that they may not be able to take within our environment, beyond earning the credit and working towards making those transfer credits to the college. I see Mr. Dunham in the audience. Mr. Dunham's daughter took one of the courses over the summer. Some students took it to advance themselves. We had some sophomores take pre-calculus so that they could take calculus as juniors and maybe take calculus BC, and take both AP calculus courses in high school, which is an opportunity we haven't been able to afford before. So there's a lot of benefits to the program, and I just want to thank the students for being, for staying on the stage, because they've, they've had a wonderful experience, and they've been willing to share that. And the way we recruited students for our next course is our six students who took the human communications course made a presentation to all students who are eligible for a dual enrollment course. And I think their presentation played a real positive role in terms of the number of students who were interested. So the Intro to Business course that we're going to be running this semester on Saturday mornings, right now, had 18 people take, show interest and take applications. We've had seven students enrolled, and we still have some time. And I think, when talking to the 18 students who took applications, there's a real sense that, I think a good number of them are going to take them. So I think we'll see, there's a good chance we'll see between 12 and 16 students in that Saturday morning course. And I think that's due to the presentation that group of students made to the student body, because they did a great job selling it to them. So I just want to thank them for the, all of their efforts in terms of dual enrollment. I think it's been a real positive addition to the middle high school.
Thank you very much.
I just want to commend you guys, too, because you're all teenagers, and I don't know many that want to wake up on a Saturday morning and voluntarily go to school. So congratulations. I think that's pretty impressive. I know a lot of you guys are working and doing other things, and you're making a wise investment in your future, so congratulations.
I do think there'd be a benefit to say what the requirements are to take the course. So to take a dual enrollment course, and this is the college's requirements, you must be 16 years of age, you must have a GPA of 3.0 or higher currently within your high school course load. So any student who met those eligibility requirements, we've met with them and told them the programs that are available.
And they have to place it? And they have to take that?
They have to take the Accuplacer, but I don't, I don't know if they've made them all take the Accuplacer.
I guess they examine their records.
See if they meet the criteria. And they have to go through the, the other thing that's interesting is, they are, and I don't know how much they avail themselves of this, but I think students will in the future, they have, they are considered Cape Cod Community College students, so they have full access to the facilities at the college. So if they were going to go down to Cape Cod Community College, they'd be able to access the library, really anything, like any other student who attends the school.
All their performances.
So that's a little perk, too. Performances, and then all the resources that are actually in the facility. I don't know if any of you actually did that. No.
The library is worth a trip. It's a wonderful library.
But, but that opportunity is there as being members, they're viewed as enrolled students at Cape Cod Community College.
That's great.
Thank you so much. And you don't have to stay. We love you being here, but we know you have homework.
Thank you very much. Come on, guys.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Scott, I believe we're leading it to...
Yes.
National Merit Commended Scholars.
So this is an outstanding accomplishment by our two students who are going to recognize here this evening. Both of them were commended scholars as part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. To become a commended scholar for the National Merit Scholar, you have to have your score be in the top 3% of all students who took the PSAT exam in the year of your graduating class. So for them, it would be the PSAT exam of the class of 2012, when they were juniors. And these two students score in the top 3% nationally of all students who took the exam, which is really an outstanding accomplishment. Then, from the commended scholars, the next step is to become a semifinalist or a finalist for the National Merit Scholar. Neither of our students went on to that next level, but I'd like to talk about that, because it's really, it's very difficult in Massachusetts to do that, because for the commended scholars, the top 3%, doesn't matter where you live. To become a National Merit Scholar, they actually balance it out amongst the states. So we often hear that Massachusetts has the highest test scores, which they do. So Massachusetts has the highest PSAT scores, we have the highest SAT scores. It's very difficult for a student in Massachusetts to become a National Merit Scholar. The cutoff is usually, it's the top half percent of all scores in the country actually become a National Merit Scholar. But then that's, that top half percent is distributed equally throughout the country. And since Massachusetts has the highest scores, it's really difficult. Your scores probably have to be, in Massachusetts, in the top 0.2%. You have to be, you have to be at 99.8 of scores in the country to actually become a National Merit Scholar. But it's still an outstanding accomplishment to know that your scores were that high in comparison to all the students in the country. It speaks well for these students and their dedication to their education, and their dedication to making sure that they can be the best they can be. It's also a celebration for their parents to see them reach that high level. I'm sure they're very proud of them.
And their teachers.
And their teachers. Not, not to diminish their teachers and their role, their teachers in that education, because they played a huge role. In terms of, at convocation, we'll actually present the students with the actual certificates they receive from the National Merit Scholarship Program, but we thought it was appropriate to bring them before the community here this evening and to recognize them before the committee and the community of Carver as a whole. So without further ado, I'd like to recognize and name our two National Merit Commended Scholars and have them come up, and I don't know if they'll be, shake everybody's hand.
Yes.
That'd be great. So first, Andrew Foster.
Congratulations.
We are so proud of you. Just keep rolling in here.
An outstanding accomplishment by both Andrew and Catherine. And as I said, we will recognize you again at convocation with your official certificates from the National Merit Scholarship Program.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay, too, if I'm sure you have other things to do.
Thank you, Scott.
So, um, under our second goal in the District of Management and Operations, we always have a personnel update. And in your packet, we have a letter that we accept, but with great sadness. And I'd like to invite Patrick to tell us about his future chapter.
I didn't really know I was gonna be, be speaking, but...
I didn't tell you on purpose.
I'm never at a loss for words. The letter the superintendent referred to is my letter of retirement. I will be retiring from Carver from education, and June 30th of this year. And as the letter says, I've had the, the opportunity, the privilege and the honor of having been in Carver twice. My first time was from 1993 to 2000. I was actually the first business manager in Carver when the region dissolved. And then I went off to a couple other, do a couple of other things, and again, was, was very, very fortunate in being able to come back, and probably even more fortunate to be taken back. And it's just been a very wonderful, wonderful 12 years. Fully, half my career as a, as a business manager has been, has been here in Carver. Certainly not, not without mixed feelings either that, that that decision was made. But in the, in the end, it's, it's kind of like you find retirement or it finds you, and you know, for everybody, that point in time is, is different. I didn't really know when it was going to be, but it did, it did kind of find me. It's for some, some very, very positive reasons for which, for which I do that. But it has been, again, such a pleasure and honor to have worked with many, many wonderful people within the school system, both of the administration, the teachers, the support staffs have all been just terrific to work with. They've had a lot of good working relationships with all those people. The staff over at Town Hall, just terrific relationships and abilities to work with a terrific group of people over at Town Hall, and the wonderful people and students of Carver have also made my stay here, as I said, a real pleasure. But I will be around for about five more months. I don't have it done today as yet. But again, it's been my pleasure. I'm thankful for this opportunity, and I'm thankful I'm also able to get on to that next phase of my life. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. We'll do a little something special before I leave, so we'll invite you all.
We won't let him off the hook. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. So we also have hired Amy Piekarski as a speech-language pathologist, and we've had some retirement announcements. Steve Cobill custodian, Kaike Fager custodian, and Sandra Sylvia bus driver. And we're in the process of hiring those positions with people who've retired. So we, retirement's such a happy thing for the people who get to retire. It's one of Scott's very favorite subjects, only eight years away. Last week at the administrators' meeting, I put Patrick sharing, you know, we share just good news with each other, and, and Scott says, "Is this about my favorite subject?" So yes, it is. So thank you, and we will be putting together, we'll be posting this job sooner rather than later so we can get out early into the market, and we'll be putting together a committee, and some school members will be asked to volunteer. So we look forward to getting into that process so we have a very smooth transition. I think that's the key for this position. And next on our agenda, this has been on here for a long time, the MSBA Statement of Interest, because we talk about it every time, but today it's very fresh because Patrick and I, and our new town administrator of four or five days, went to Boston to meet with the MSBA. So we have been told that we will be issued an invitation in about a week to come to the January 29th MSBA Board of Directors meeting, at which time it is their intention to invite us into what they call, it's changed a little bit since we were here last time, it's called the eligibility period, which primarily is a paperwork exchange, where we fill out documents, they fill out documents, we sign off, they sign off, until you get to a certain point. And in this point of the project, that we will come up with a, a number that we have to have to finance the, the rest of the planning, and there's two prongs to that. We have completed 97% of schematic design, and it was well-funded by the town, and we have about $100,000 left to finish that part, and we feel that's really essentially enough money to finance that. But most recently, the town building study committee has been looking at an alternative site. Could we consider, would we consider building a brand-new building somewhere on the high school, middle school site? And they hired the Collins Center to make a recommendation, but their report won't come up with a conclusive answer because there's too much engineered study that needs to be, but their, their recommendation is probably gonna be on the sort of, this should definitely be considered. And so as part of feasibility, we will probably need to go to town meeting for another sum of money to do an engineered study of the high school site, to find out if it's feasible to put a building there, given the wastewater treatment plant and the wells. And they have some, they have some good ideas, the Collins Center, on where that might happen. But MSBA today has asked us to fold that into our consideration through an abbreviated feasibility study, because we don't have to go back and study the site that we've already studied and had 27 plans for and pick B3. So we don't have to do that over. We will have to look, when it comes to the schematic design part, we will have to look at new building codes that might have changed another requirement or two that the MSBA might, but it wouldn't be an expensive process to go through with that. So we will be invited into eligibility with the idea that we will study a new building on a new site. We, we designed a new building, and we did a cost estimate for 2011, so that part won't have to be redone, but it's the actual positioning, location, could we put it there? And if the answer is yes, then it would be carried forward to what's called the preferred schematic design. We previously chose B3, but so then we would have two choices. So this will take the process a little further out in time than we had anticipated. Probably, we have 270 days to get to feasibility, but I can pretty much assure you it will be just past town meeting because it is truly an exchange of papers that I've done already before. So that part won't be hard. And then they will come up with a number. MSBA will tell us what number, dollar number they want us to figure out to do a little bit further study of the high school site. So all in all, it was a very good meeting, and we invited the brand-new town administrator, Michael Melonowski, and he went with great enthusiasm with us, and I think that spoke a lot. And I think Diane Sullivan, who handles people new into the process, even people who've been through the process before and are new again, really she spoke for the whole building. She says, "We could not wait to welcome Carver back." And people I've worked with before were coming in the hall and greeting us, and they're saying they're really glad that the town has decided to move at least this far forward. So, do you want to add anything, Patrick?
No, that about says it all, but I think they, mainly, they are extremely interested in Carver getting in the pipeline. They really want that.
I did leave out one important thing. When we first applied and were accepted in 2007, we were one of 44 school projects accepted out of 429 applicants, and we were rated among the 44 most in need in the state. And in 2000, when they went back, out of 1,800 schools they'd examined, we won one of the 23 most needy, and now she said she put us in the top three or four, that the most urgent needing, need in the state. So they're very anxious to address our needs. So I did, I did leave that part out.
Any questions or comments for Lizer Pat? Well, thank you for the update, and we look forward to seeing the progress on this.
And we'll be...
It's exciting to, to be able to kind of see the next steps move forward on that. So that's great.
So somewhere in this first eligibility phase, it's like the third or fourth step, you will form a building committee, and at that time, we'll talk, you know, more in-depth about the process.
We look forward to hearing feedback from the January 29th meeting.
Will be there.
Yes.
So we've been parsing out our budget in smaller presentations, hoping to make it more understandable, and tonight we have athletics and technology. Play ball, Mike.
Hello? Hi.
Welcome, Mike. Mike Schultz is our athletic director and assistant principal of the Middle High School.
So when I submit my budget, I usually try to submit a packet with some backup or justification for each line item, which is, I think, in your, in your binders. So this presentation that is in this format is very similar to that, but will outline each sort of page. So like most of the budgets, we start every year, the athletic budget is level-funded. As we go through this, it's not gonna necessarily look level-funded because you're gonna see that each year, the numbers sort of change quite a bit, the actuals, and I'm gonna talk a little bit about why that's happening based on certain line items. For example, the FY14 actual budget was $79,504, and our request for next year is $86,705. So certain things obviously change the budget a little bit based on the specific sports that we're running each year. Coaching salaries obviously are included in this as part of our staffing. So the athletic budget, we do have some supplemental revenue, and basically, we carry three revolving accounts. The first revolving account is an intramural account. When we lost the middle school program a few years ago, we added the intramural program. For the most part, it's self-funded, so whatever revenue we take in, we used to pay buses and our supervisors. We average about 50 students, and our fee is about $50, so it's sort of much, pretty much an empty line item at the end of the year. Our second account is our largest account that we manage. We take in about $35,000 a year. It's our user fees. Our user fees are based on $90. Surprisingly, some people did not know this, we have a $90 user fee and a family cap of $360. So once you've paid your four user fees, you are free to continue to play for the rest of the year for your students. We do have waivers, and you can see a breakdown of what we've taken in FY13 in terms of user fees and per season, and then waivers. Basically, a waiver is, they fill out a form, it's a financial aid form of some sort, and the, we keep track of those, and we look to the Booster Club to help support that. So those waivers that you see, the 14 waivers, are typically paid for by the Booster Club and goes into our revolving account. Yes?
The cap is interesting. So the $360 cap, if you have two kids...
Yes.
And they're doing all three seasons...
Yes.
They're really paying for four seasons.
Spring is free, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, yeah, some people didn't know that. It's pretty, it's in most of our literature, if not all of our literature, but the state actually does a, I shouldn't say the state, the athletic director in Duxbury does a survey every year in District C and D. The state's broken up into about seven or eight districts, all the way to, I think, F or G. We are District C, and Yewahams and stuff like that are District D. They do a survey every year of all user fees in those districts, and we are one of the lowest. Believe it or not, there are still some towns like Monemoy and a few in the Cape, Brockton, some other schools that don't have user fees. But we are very low in terms of user fees. The average is probably $250 a sport in most towns. People often ask, "What do you, what do you use that $35,000 to do?" Basically, additional supplies, and for the most part, it pays for our trainer. Our trainer's not in our budget, so we use that to pay for our trainer. We have a full-time trainer who does a fantastic job for us. Gate receipts is our final revolving account. Annually, we take in about $17,000. These are any revenue we get from games, mostly football games, basketball games, and occasional night soccer game, if it's like a game. Once in a while, we'll get some other revenue from our coke machines or different things we're doing, and they typically will go into our intramural account to help offset some of our expenses. Next few slides are gonna outline, I think we've got about 10 or so line items in our budget, driver's salaries, officials, insurance, and so forth. We're gonna go through each one briefly and sort of outline some of the changes that happen each year with them. Our second largest line item is our transportation budget. And again, this, this fluctuates quite a bit based on the number of sports we offer. For example, a few years ago, we were not offering JV soccer for boys. You have to budget it because you don't know how many kids are coming out. This year, we don't offer a freshman basketball team for the girls. It's based on numbers. But you budget that in there, and then you see what happens. We're fortunate in this town that, for me, for the budget for transportation, we pay driver's salaries. That's it. So in your packets, your more extensive packets under that line item of transportation, you'll see how we break down on a spreadsheet each sport by number of trips. Again, it's based on, our basketball season is typically 20 games, you gotta factor 10 at home and 10 at away, and we try to piggyback any type of transportation we can in terms of JV and varsity traveling together. Sometimes baseball and boys tennis will travel together because we offset the schedules that way. So the FY15 estimate is $17,300, and again, I think we're fortunate. Other towns tell me that when they send a bus here, it's $400. So we are fortunate to have that ability to, to offset the costs there. The officials is our largest line item. It makes up about 43% of our budget. Again, fluctuates quite a bit based on the number of teams that we offer. In this also comes other components of game management, security. A lot of the sports in the MIA now require you to have game and table officials, so people have to actually be on the table, on the scorer's table, and administering different components of the game in terms of scoreboard and so forth. We don't, we do set the rates for our security and our game management that help us out at, at large events. We do not set the rates for the individual referee fees. Again, in the packet, you'll see the MIA, from the MIA handbook, there's information for each sport. They typically go up a dollar a year, roughly, and average official's making 75 bucks an hour, roughly, for a varsity event.
So is, is that decreased because of the number of events, then?
Yes. Yeah. Once again, if we're not carrying three girls' basketball teams, I'm gonna save 10 games at home, which is substantial, you know, $700, somewhere in there. Obviously, the, the freshman and JV games are a little bit less than the varsity. And then there, there are other rates for the MIA and sports officials and so forth. And again, if we get deeper into the tournament, it's more buses, it's more officials and so forth, so...
That's good news.
It is good news. Athletic insurance, the, this is, this is one that's moved a little bit. The athletic insurance is something that falls under our jurisdiction. This year, for the first time, it's gone up a couple thousand, but for a good reason. In the past, the athletic insurance is something that was supplemental to our athletic program. So if you were involved in a sport after school and you were injured, most people look for the reimbursement for things that, that their insurance doesn't cover. For the most part, I was getting emergency room visits, the copays, MRIs, anything that's beyond your, your insurance. The, our accidental insurance, our athletic insurance kicks in. But it was only for, for the last few years, it was only for after-school activities. We were able to join a new, and Pat probably mentioned this before, we were able to join a different company that now covers physical education class, athletics, and recess. So we are all covered for those extra things. And again, most people are using it for reimbursement of copays. I know the insurance has changed, and copays, instead of being 25 now, are 100 or 150, so we do get that question. It's a simple form we fill out, and we submit to the parents, and the insurance company's really good about following up. We don't pay bills here, I tell parents. We just give you the information, and they will contact you. So although it's a little bit more money, this has come in handy for some of our classes, especially phys ed. We've had some injuries in the past that haven't been covered, so...
This was in response to... This was in response to parent concerns as we looked into another way to cover our students, not only as being athletes and after-school activities, but also women there, phys ed, and recess, you know.
That's not that big of an increase either, that seems pretty...
No, compared to the actuals from two years ago, yeah.
You know, children who've sustained a concussion in gym wasn't covered, but it was...
If you're playing a sport.
If you're playing a sport, and there's a lot of fallout, it can get quite expensive.
Yeah, the concussion clinics now with the copays can be quite a bit. Physical therapy, all those things are covered in the accidental insurance, so it's a nice benefit. Seminaries and training, another line item for us. As a requirement of the MIA, we are required to have our coaches take a coach education course offered through the MIA. It's $100 a course. We're fortunate to have a lot of grandfathered-in coaches in terms of meeting the set requirements by the state. Our coaches are, for the most part, all certified under one of the many tiers that are established, but when we do get new coaches, we have to offer them the training and we do offer some reimbursement. We also use some of this money for our CPR first aid training, which we do every year. We try to offer the course once a year for our coaches and we're fortunate to have Mike Fratcolasi, who runs classes for us, our phys ed teacher, he's certified. But there is a fee for cards and some other things that we do. So this line item gets eaten up pretty quickly, but again, it does fluctuate. Sometimes we don't have to use it. Office supplies, 475 is our number and, you know, it's very easily, paper and postage is pretty straightforward. Again, the general supplies and maintenance, again, this is, for the most part, this one here is for field management. I would say three-quarters of this is field paint, quick dry, infield mixed clay, anything we're using to keep our fields up and running. We do look to replace benches and tables and trash barrels, anything we're using for games, but majority of it is field supplies. Medical supplies, another one. Our trainer manages this account. Again, it's broken down per season in your books. Again, each team has a med kit, each team has a bunch of medical supplies, and we do have some general maintenance with our ice machines and watercools and so forth, so we try to move those around every few years. Uniform replacement, we've created a spreadsheet. We've got a uniform replacement sort of rotation every five years or so. What we try to do is, obviously, we replace varsity and drop the varsity down to JV. I think most of our teams are in pretty good shape. Within every three to five years, they're getting uniforms, not because we just need to spend the money, but because numbers fall off and shirts rip and so forth. Also in here, we have another line item for additional equipment. Additional equipment is a number that moves quite a bit and we're fortunate to have assistance through other supplies like building use and sometimes other revenues, but for the most part, additional equipment is, just barely covers our football reconditioning. Every year, we have to send out our shoulder pads and our helmets to be reconditioned. They check them, they pressurize them, they do all kinds of tests, and then they reject whatever's not going to make it. So on average, they reject six to eight, 10 helmets a year. We try to replace them with concussion-rated helmets so that we're up to speed with that. And shoulder pads, same thing, six or eight shoulder pads. And then there's a fee for reconditioning. So between replacing things that are being rejected and reconditioning old equipment, it's a $4,000, $5,000 a year expense on average, and that pretty much wipes out the additional equipment. But we are fortunate to, if we do have some, is replace soccer nets and backboards and stuff like that that need to be replaced. Dues and memberships, to be a part of the South Shore League, which we are a member of for the last many, several years, it's a $4,000 fee. Basically, our league gets together and we hire commissioners, we have awards, we have a bunch of different programs that encompass that $4,000. To be members of the MIAA, it's about $5,683 a year. We do pay a portion of that. It's based on the number, again, in your package, you'll see our spreadsheet breakdown per sport, you pay per sport. Athletics budget pays a portion of that, the high school budget pays a portion of that. And then I always like to, the MIA requires us to report out each year the number of athletes in each sport that we offer. I keep a spreadsheet based on those numbers and then I do a cost analysis based on estimates of what we're spending. And again, uniform replacements, any equipment we've got to buy each year for each sport, for example, baseball and tennis, we have to buy new tennis balls in baseball, and that's a rough number per sport, a cost per pupil analysis. Hockey is obviously an expensive sport. We co-op with another town, it is not in our budget, so that revenue comes from our booster club, or that expense comes from our booster club.
Has that partnership improved with the new town, now that we're working with Wayham versus Sacred Heart?
Yeah, you know, in terms of our numbers, we've been, we've been about five or six for the last several years. Wayham now is carrying about anywhere from 10 to 15 or so students. We've got about 20 kids on the ice and they're improving. And the same was with Sacred Heart. Sacred Heart actually just got bigger and they went in a different direction and you have to renew your co-op every two years with the MIA. So our two-year window is up with Sacred Heart. They wanted to try to continue to grow their program. They're heading in a different direction, so we joined Wayham with a two-year agreement. So this is our second year. Same with wrestling. Wrestling's in our second year with, and again, that's improving, that's growing, we've got a youth program going, so although the numbers still look pretty low for wrestling, they're about eight to 10. Two-year window, hopefully, we're going to be 15, 18.
Right.
Yeah, so yeah, it's working out really well, yeah. And the hockey team's actually having a much better year than they had the last few. They've done really well. But you can see some of the numbers, they're, they do fluctuate quite a bit. And a lot of that has to do with the number of students participating and obviously certain sports are more expensive than others. Anybody have any questions? I've got two more slides about Level 2 and some capital.
Chair will open up to the committee. Barry?
I just thank you for the presentation, Mike, because even the more detail that follows is very interesting. But I just want to ask, how are you feeling about our, I just think sports are so important in order to balance off the academics, kind of makes a person whole, and are you feeling like we are spending an adequate amount on sports or would you like to see more?
Is that a loaded question?
It's like asking my four-year-old, do you want some more?
Actually, no, I think, you know, again, you can see the line items that get eaten up pretty quickly. I mean, obviously, having a dues and membership line item is, I don't expect more than that. It's whatever the due is, we pay the due. There's always some, we always need a little bit of help with the additional equipment. I think that we're, you know, we're starting to come into a situation where the building's 25 or so plus years old and we're running into things that we need to start replacing. And that's part of the next slide, which our Level 2 requests, you know, our basketball backboards, they're getting, they're getting pretty old. They get a lot of activity. These gyms are used a lot. Our field hockey goal, we haven't replaced since the beginning. I was fortunate to get some money at the end of last year and some help from the booster club and we were able to replace the soccer nets. We went through and they were bad, they were hazardous to the facility. We removed a bunch in youth soccer and some building use money and some of our additional equipment, and we managed to get eight new soccer nets for the smaller size and a couple of larger goals. But those are the things that we're going to have to look into as we move forward. There are, there are things we haven't, that are facility-based, that we haven't been able to improve. I think we do a really good job in terms of the smaller items. We are able to purchase new baseballs and softballs and baseball hats and tennis balls, all the things we need each season, we're able to buy basketballs and soccer balls. So we are good in that, in that area. It's the larger items, like our Level 2 requests that I'm going to go over really quick that need to be addressed.
Yeah, to kind of reply to that with, I mean, looking at these capital improvements in the Level 2s, you're going to go at their sort of redundant year after year, and I think, you know, focusing on taking care of some of those are going to instill more pride in that program itself anyway. You get a new track, you're going to get more people interested in track and it's going to bring that up, I think, in what you're looking for, which will, you know, in terms of bringing more funding in. But that's, in that same sense, that's where I'd rather see the focus towards knocking some of these things off the list that are there year after year because we're going to, like the elementary school, and if we don't do anything about these things that need to be fixed, they're going to get so far, they're not going to be worth it. You know, and it's tough to find a way to fit that in, you know. I see the catch there, but year after year, when you're seeing the same thing, something has to be done to...
And we've chipped away at some of these. If you look in the back of some of the packets that I give you, we have, what, I have the five-year plans and so forth, so we have chipped away at some of them. You know, we had a plan for different things in the, and new radios for our group and different components, goalposts and scoreboard, and we've chipped away at them, but these are some larger items that we need to start addressing. I don't think it comes as part of the budget itself, I think it comes as part of...
We were able to address the tennis courts and an outdoor basketball court with the community preservation money. And then there was a period of time where community preservation legislation in the state was at odds with each other, whether you could improve existing facilities or if you had to build brand-new, and they finally settled that. And you can improve existing facilities, so one way, the track is, the gym floor is very expensive, but the track could be taken off of the budget if we could work with the town to use community preservation monies because it's now back on the table as an allowable thing to do. So we did get a huge boost from the new tennis courts and...
Yeah, our numbers, to your point, our numbers did increase. Our girls tennis numbers and our boys tennis numbers increased because you're playing a brand-new circus.
Right.
So a new track and stuff like that, I mean, a new turf field, those type of things would increase the excitement of the sports program. Don't quote me, but I know that Norwell is under a, they're putting in two new turf fields, and I believe the project is like $3.1 million project, and I believe over 2.9 of it is CPA funded and a variety of other ways. So it is something we've talked about. It is certainly within the new regulations to do it. In terms of the capital improvements slide, you know, there's two big, there's three big things in around there. High school gym floor's been on there since I came here eight years ago. It continues to be a problem. The old rubber floor is these four-foot-wide sheets and they're rolled across the gym floor, and as these seams start to open up, it just expands. We've already replaced panels about as big as this in the middle of the gym floor and we're having more and more of those opening up.
It's lost its bond to the substrate.
Yeah. The company that came in and replaced it, they cut a section out that was supposed to be half the table, when they were done, it was double the table because, you know, it doesn't have the, all the years of the water and the machines and the wear and tear, it's no longer adhered to the concrete subbase.
Didn't we discuss last year the options of where to go with that too, whether it was hardwood or whether to go to the other?
Yeah, I don't have, I actually think Dave has better numbers than I do on that. But there is a, you know, they're still doing rubber floors or some form of rubber floor that's a little better. Obviously, wood would be ideal for us, but that's a big issue. The track renovation, I don't know if you've been on the track lately, but most of the rubber pieces that are on there have gone through and the asphalt is showing. There is going to be a point at which there would be some, there's going to be some issues with the officials wanting to continue to hold meets there. And then finally, our press box. Our press box has some structural issues, let's just say.
The press box is done.
That's the original press box, right?
It was built shortly after the building was built, but yeah, it hasn't had a lot of, it was built, a lot of it, from my knowledge, it was donations from the mill. It's a lot of that old mill wood. It has shrunk, it has settled, it's not PT, it's got some issues.
How's the track for the spring? Is that, I mean, I do walk on it a lot and jog on it, but I see...
I mean, it's okay.
That's why you wore it down.
Yeah, you've got, you've got, you've got areas that are concerning. When officials come, they look at it and they're concerned because you've got stretches about this big which are, you know, high-wear areas, starts and finish lines and so forth that are at a bat when you're running on asphalt.
And can I say, I mean, that, obviously, this is the school, but I know when I am walking on the track, it's a great community service. There are a lot of people walking on the track. I think, I think when you came aboard, you kind of opened that up.
Yeah, there are, there are a lot of people throughout the day that are walking on the track. Yeah, it gets a lot of use.
So it's definitely community.
Yeah, I mean, the facility in general, I mean, building use, Dave and I, we laugh, but building use, there's a lot of people using the buildings during the weekends and after school, and we need to put a little attention to the things that they're using, like backboards and rims and goalposts and nets and so forth. There's one other thing on the Level 2 request that I think is in Level 2 request, but is not on my list, I apologize, and that is a van. We put down a 12-passenger van. A lot of schools are using them. The issue we have is that we would have to get our coaches or somebody who has a 7B...
7D.
7D certification, but it's pretty, I guess it's pretty simple to get. It's some sort of certification to the registry. And again, we use, we would use the van quite a bit for smaller groups traveling, tennis, golf, and so forth. We don't use 15-passenger vans, but we'd like to use the 12-passenger vans, and over the course of, you know, three to five years, it would pay for itself certainly. So that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mike.
So next.
Thank you.
Next is technology.
We have a Saturday course for that.
All right, so I'm the blue sheets.
I guess we appreciate the color coordinating.
Thank you, Anne Marie. So I'm here to present the technology budget for the upcoming year, and I'm using the same format that everyone else has used thus far. So on the next slide, thank you, it's that same slide that reminds us about a level service budget and the fact that we're maintaining our programs and not growing per se. Thank you. And so the technology cost center has proposed level-funded budget in terms of services and maintenance, and you'll notice on the slide that we're about to go to, don't go there yet, go back. That's okay. That, it actually looks like fiscal year 15 that we're requesting an increase of about $12,000 from two years ago, but that is because we spend a lot of money on subscriptions or contracted services and those rates go up on an annual basis. So what we're able to provide in terms of support with subscriptions and contracted services is maintained, but because those rates have gone up, you'll notice a slight increase. We have the same amount of services that we've had for the past five years, and the other thing is that this does not account for technology growth such as trying to get park-approved devices and iPads and that sort of thing. So thank you. So this is the layout for the past five years and then what we're proposing for fiscal year 15, a sum of $92,367. And as Scott mentioned earlier, we have had two large projects this year in terms of technology. We have been working to try to support our infrastructure so that we can have a wireless environment and prepare for the park assessments, and that we've also been able to purchase 180 iPads, and that comes from the town and the fact that we had a warrant article that we were able to receive. So fiscal year 14 is a little bit of an anomaly, but in terms of 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15, that's that level-funded service and maintenance.
But I think at least through our discussion that we've had as a committee here about, should it look more like fiscal year 14 versus the other years? To put us where we need to go, and I think that's the conversation the committee and the community needs to have to support the work that's going on, so.
Thank you. And preemptively, if Mr. Stresky asks me that question, then I'll say, yes, I would like fiscal year 14. All right, thank you. So as far as impact of budgeting practices, we just talked about how growth has not been funded for the past five years, but we do appreciate capital outlay and the fact that we were able to receive the warrant article to get the new iPads and the infrastructure. And we know that more demands are being placed on our teachers and our students than ever before in terms of preparing learners for the 21st century and the fact that they need to compete in a digital world that was foreign to us as we were being raised. And so many of our students are digital natives in terms of the fact that they're born into technology, they know how to use devices and how to use that for learning, and there's definitely an impetus placed on all of our teachers to be able to support that type of learning and bring it to the next level. In terms of budget building blocks, we have four kind of umbrella cost centers. We have equipment supplies and maintenance, and then we have repairs and maintenance, contracted services, and general supplies. So equipment supplies and maintenance include maintaining the equipment that we currently own, such as servers and switches, wireless access points, that backend-type stuff that we don't see, and then desktops that we might see in computer labs or in classrooms, laptops, handheld devices, and peripherals. We also would include any upgrades to desktops that don't... We also would include any upgrades to desktops that don't meet minimum requirements. Later on in the meeting, we'll talk about a list of technology that will ask the school committee to help us retire because they are at end of life and there's no upgrade that we can provide to them that would allow us to be updated to the next level and be able to run the programs that we need to. This also includes our telephone system, cabling, printer repairs and parts and monitors. And we still have a number of monitors that are the cathode ray tube monitors, the ones that look kind of like boxes and are at end of life. So we'll be asking for some replacement for the flat screen, which obviously those have really gone down in price over the past five to 10 years. And then external archiving. With our next cost center, repairs and maintenance, this includes our surveillance system and all of our cameras. And we have a cycle where we try to retire or replace age cameras. And that would be included in repairs and maintenance and then parts and services for the surveillance system. In terms of contracted services, this is one of our largest areas. It includes our annual software subscriptions. So this would be things like our email, our website, our federal lunch program software, our staff and business software to be able to track our personnel and help coordinate with town hall and payroll and that sort of thing. So I would say that if we could come up with kind of three different tiers of contracted services, we would have that aspect, which is operational. Right above it, you see instructional, so that's our student management software and our digital grading systems needed in order to send information to the state for state reporting. And then on the next screen, you'll see network solutions. So those are things like our web speed maintenance, our backup, our archiving, our disaster recovery. We talked about the wireless access points and we have different software to help support that, such as watch guard. We have switches and servers. We have imaging software known as Active Disk. We have help desk and inventory so we can track our intake and then what we're retiring. And then to make sure that we are E-rate compliant, we need to make sure that we have antivirus, firewalls, filtering, and then iAuto Alert. So the last aspect is general supplies. And as Mike alluded in his presentation, that's pretty self-explanatory, but things like shipping costs for anything that we need to return and then any organizational type materials. So the way that we've crafted this budget is not unlike years past where we review the current inventory, including items that need to be retired or things that are in dire need of upgrade and can be upgraded in order to support what we need them to do. And then we review the requirements for E-rate, for federal and state reporting, for filtering, for school lunch, for changes in instruction and technology. And from there, kind of prioritize and determine what essentials need to be in place for the upcoming school year. And then determine what upgrades are within our price point and what we can actually afford and that would be fiscally prudent. And then we submit the level one budget and level two. And so my final slide is just an overview of our level two requests, which include virtualization, virtual desktops, so that we are able to access things from logging in outside of this area so teachers could work from home and that sort of thing. And then upgrade antiquated servers and that piece, making sure that we have an image of servers. And lastly, cloud storage and backup. So as we know, more and more districts are going to the cloud and that can be costly. So any questions?
My head went in the room, excuse me. Which I might also address to Liz too. Is there any sense of any kind of buzz or talk? When we look at this district, obviously, we seem to stay at the curve or try to be ahead of the curve all the time. And there are clearly many districts within the state that are not. And without the funding and without the proper, you know, the mandates that they're putting out, is there a buzz around the state that people aren't going to be ready for what their mandating has to happen anyway? And I know we're working very hard to be, but with so many who aren't, where's that, where's that coming as far as from the state level?
There is finally a recognition that they are demanding from every district, more than every district can possibly do. And part of that was recognized when the Massachusetts State Board of Education agreed that the park would still be a pilot, that there will continue to be testing. But by still being a pilot, there can still be some paper testing to go forward, however they are going to charge the districts for paper testing, a per pupil cost. So it would be recurring.
Get their money.
It's an ironic solution, right there.
Right. But, I mean, for five years, I've been raising my hand at every single superintendent meeting and saying, how are you going to help us solve the fact that communities cannot afford this all at once? And, and the commissioner, who's the same commissioner, he's pointing at me and saying, make it a priority. Well, you know, we got to pay for everything's a priority. So it, I don't think that there's any sort of help along the way, but E-rate is a federal reimbursement that comes to the state from the feds and then it's passed out. And they have expanded the fundability of items in E-rate at the federal level. I think this will give us a little relief, especially since we went to this great expense of funding our infrastructure, that the things we have left that we need to build it up will be more reimbursable. I don't, I can't give you an exact figure yet, but we, I will. It's, we've never been ahead of the curve in technology, except for the fact that our teachers and students are very hungry for it. And that we've given them good training, they want more. They're already, in many cases, very able to use it. We haven't, we still have a lot of professional development to do. So I really feel now that with our infrastructure, we are finally caught up to be able to use the future. That's, that's, I didn't, I wouldn't have said that this time last year. We're hoping for another warrant order this year to finish the work so we can give this, you know, we don't have enough electricity at the elementary school, so we can't really buy more laptops or desktops. We can't, we can't even plug them in. But we can get them 180 iPads, which you can charge overnight and they, they last a long time now. So the iPad's the more reasonable way to go with that. So, and that we can easily carry them to a new building, you know. And we did install everything in the Governor John and the Ron K. Washburn building in a way that when, if and when we get this new building, everything but the actual wiring can be lifted and taken. If it, it just depends on how long it takes us to get there. But, so it was installed with a, with a plan that it wouldn't be just waste of money. So that, that I can assure you that what is usual will be transferred over.
And there is a sense of recognition finally on their part.
Yeah, a little bit. You know how it goes.
With reluctance, yeah.
Thank you.
So the, other thing I'd like to point out that has happened so slowly, you didn't feel like you were getting hit with a truck, but we actually were. When I first took this job here in Carver, there are lists of 121 submissions I have to make to the Department of Education every year. Most of them were paper reports, right? And now there's like 190 some reports I have to make, but things that used to be, they would provide you with some of the basic information. Now we have to build the technology information and give to them. It's, it's, we've become the secretary of the Department of Education. I don't have any other way of putting it. But, you know, for instance, for our MSBA enrollment data, now we just, they just go in and grab it on January 1st from our system. But we have to do all of the input where we used to give them the data on October 1 and they did all of the input. So, I mean, you, five years ago, people didn't have information management in the school district. Now we do. So it's, it's, and I think we'll see even more radical change, but just that piece of it has really changed in the last six years.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
People always ask us about the grants, and so I didn't make a PowerPoint, it's just one page. And sort of the standard grants that we call entitlement, that we get through federal dollars allocated to the states based on a couple of factors. One is the number of children who receive free and reduced lunch. And the other one is the median income in any part of the state. So once again, Massachusetts isn't as needy as a state, so some of those funds don't get funneled to us. But the Title I monies at one time were about double this. And now, but they've stayed pretty much the same for the last three years. And Title I, the purpose of that is to support early intervention for literacy, both in math and reading and writing. So consequently, a majority of this money goes to support our reading staff and our paraprofessionals who are highly qualified to provide Title I services and a little bit to professional development. You have to set aside a certain amount each year, but now they let you count the money you spent in Title II for part of the professional development. And Title II-A, class reduction and professional development in math, science, and ELA, which we are now able to use entirely for professional development, which helps us get to the myriad of unfunded mandates that we have to train all teachers. So that's, this one has gone drastically down, but we're making that money work for us. So it does. And then there's, you get allocated from the state academic support money based on the number of children who did not score proficient in ELA and math and science from the eighth grade on. And luckily, our number of students who don't score proficient has gone drastically down. Therefore, our money is not so great. But during the school year, we have this 2,400 and then we have, that was summer grant, pardon me. And during the school year, we've been approved verbally, but we don't have the letter yet. I'll probably get it this week. It's 5,987, but I didn't put it on this total because I didn't have it in the approval stage. So with the things that we've had approved, including your full day kindergarten, which is a competitive grant and you have to jump through quite a few hoops to have that, and we have. So our total state grants for non-sped are $263,447. Then we have some entitlement special education grants, which are based on the number of children we have that have the need for special education services. And there is some professional development, but most of it is in staffing because the foundation budget only budgets for 1% of your budget to be in special education. And most districts have 14% or more children. So that's why the federal government has supplemented this through the special education grants. This is also separate a decline, but the subtotal of the guaranteed special education grants, although the numbers have fluctuated, we pretty much get the same grants year after year. And that's 777,000, I mean, 513,849 for that subtotal, but then the two together equals That has slowly crept down. When I first came here, it was $1.2 million. So it's been in a gradual decline, those totals. So I do work really hard. Everybody works very hard finding private grants. Makepeace has been exceedingly generous to us. And they funded the dual enrollment, which was the $8,000. And then Patrick and the town administrative assistant got together with the insurance company to get another grant, this $5,517, to help us with our security system, which will make day passes and permanent badges for us. So if you count the given grants that we now know, we're up to $790,813. In the works is the school year academic support, which I told you would be close to 6,000. And then we've applied, Karen and Paula have applied for a competitive grant from its early education and care, EEC, which is the branch of government that serves children from birth till the time they go to school. So this is a program improvement childcare quality grant, which would benefit the whole Carver community. We would be working with other local preschool and early education providers, providing trainings and support for them. And what did we ask for, 40, 39, 40,000?
Around 45,000.
Yeah. So we asked for as much as they would let us ask for. We will hear about that grant at the end of this month. It starts February 1st. They'll tell us January 29th we can get the grant. So I think the grant picture is very good. And we'll keep, you know, I won't stop looking. We'll keep applying. There's, if we don't get this one, the program improvement, there's another one out that's pre-K through third grade that we, we would, you have to have already in place delivery system and the Makepeace Center is definitely an already in place. It's 808 is the name of that, the number of that grant. So it's due February 3rd, so we'll have to decide how much work we're going to put into it before we hear from the other one. It's unlikely we would get both. So this is our grant picture. We never know from year to year what we'll have for next year. So I always present the current year as an example of what will be available for the 2015. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
All right. Then next on the agenda is capital outlay, Pat and Dave's show.
I'd just like to do just a bit of a prelude here before, before Dave takes over. But what you'll see here is the, our five-year capital plan, which is brought to the school committee before we, before we send it over to the capital outlay committee. It's essentially the, the format has just changed slightly from, from what I've done in the past, where if you'll, if you'll notice over on the far right, we do have now one column instead of two, but these are the costs that we had estimated from back in 2011 that would be critical to the elementary school buildings. And those, those have not been updated or adjusted for any type of inflation or whatever. We didn't see the, any reason to do that at this point, but it does come up to $21 million. And what we did that originally was to so note that we could actually be in a position of spending that type of money to upgrade facilities, systems and so forth and still, and still have the same two buildings.
That don't have enough space for students.
Right, which was a figure that's in excess of what the town's cost of partnering for MSBA would be to have a brand new building. And that was the reason that we originally did that. So, so we're leaving it there for that. The other part is, you're going to see some bigger numbers and bigger totals in the current five-year plan because we have had a, we conducted again through, through a capital outlay funding. Bless you. We conducted a, what we call an architectural and engineering survey of the middle high school. We hadn't had anything official on that and we thought it would be a good idea. It was about a $20,000 expense. And what they did is looked at every single aspect of the high school, from grounds to envelope, to systems, to windows, to outdoor facilities and so forth, and assessed what type of, what kind of condition it was in, when potentially it may need to be replaced or be reconditioned, and what the potential costs of those would be. Those are significant in this report and they were not here in past reports, at least, at least not to that extent. Many, many of these you're going to recognize as items that you've seen before or heard of before. Some of it was what Mike talked about in the athletics. You'll see the press. You'll see the press box in here. You'll see the van in here and so forth. So, with that, I just wanted to say a few words. I'm going to turn it over to Dave. I want to thank Dave for coming tonight. Appreciate your coming, Dave.
You're welcome.
Dave Seidentoff, our facilities director, who will go over these and pretty much speak to some of the more important and bigger numbers that we'll see here. Okay? So, thank you, Dave.
Okay. So, I will reference the capital assessment that was done. However, I won't go over the document as a whole tonight because we don't have the final draft. I do have a draft here, but it's actually back in the architect's hands right now for some final revisions. So, I'm sure we'll be sharing that with you once we have the final draft of that. So, as Pat said, that was done over the summer. That was procured through a bid process. It went out to bid, and the award was issued, and they were here during the summer and also the beginning of the school year to do a full facility assessment. And the reason for that is to help us with our capital, short-term and long-term planning for the district. So, the numbers that are in FY '15 are what was not able to be completed last year. And also, this assessment breaks down your priorities into four levels. Level one being anything that they felt was, needs immediate attention. So, that's basically do it. It needs to be done as soon as possible. Level two is one to five-year. So, anything that is in FY '15 right now for the middle school, high school, was a level-one priority by their report. So, basically, to review them, the student lockers has been a carryover that's been in there. We've discussed that, to accommodate backpacks. So, that's still there. That's been existing. The track replacement, the figure they came up with is, as you can see, just over $1 million. Now, that, I haven't been able to speak to him specifically about that in depth, but I believe that track where that has the rubber coating and a asphalt binder, I don't believe, probably luckily due to other districts doing this, they found out that you cannot just, they have not had success putting rubber on an old binder. So, basically, we're looking at digging up everything on that track, the binder, the asphalt, everything. Probably even going down to a new packed gravel subbase, which means you're probably going down six, eight inches, whatever they spec. One thing to keep in mind, I know that if you were ever going to go with a turf football field, soccer field combination, that has, they have to take that into consideration when a track is done because there is a certain procedure that they need to do on the edge of the track to tie in with the turf field. It's very specific. So, those are things, just also future planning, that if we're going to do a track, what are the odds of us doing a turf field? If we are, we need to let them know, and we need to get cost estimates on what we'd have to prepare to do that. So, that figure, I believe, does not entail a turf field going in. That is just for track replacement. Windows, wood seals, that is, that's been a carryover. That's basically some of our larger windows maintenance, just by the age of life cycle of the building. Mechanical systems, this ties into, part of the reason for this assessment was trying to tie projects together, which would make sense. We know we need a roof. We'll get to that. That's further down. However, if we're going to do a roof on the whole building, there's a lot of things up on the roof that need to come off the roof in order to put a new membrane down. If you're having to remove 27-year-old mechanical equipment that's at the end of its life cycle anyways, why would you put it back if that's going to have to be done? It makes more sense to pair certain projects together. And that's part of the, you know, bringing them in to say, okay, what can we tie together? What would make sense to tie together? So, mechanical roof makes sense to tie together. So, that's their estimate on the mechanical. Roof curbs need to be redone. We have about, I believe, 21 interior classrooms, which have central air conditioning. So, that's a lot of those, what we call split system air condition, your condensing units are on the roof. That's what that figure is mostly, that mechanical, dealing with the mechanical side of that. So, moving on, the auditorium seats, as we know, we try to keep them. We're actually lucky to, before Plymouth North was torn down last year, we actually went, and they were gracious enough to let us go in and get what we could for seating because they had the same seating as us.
We pillaged.
Yes, we did.
We got lots of good stuff.
So, we have parts. So, we're actually able to, I believe, all our seats right now are functionable and sitable in our auditorium because of that, because the parts are no longer available. So, that would be for a complete seat replacement. Stairs and guide rails, this is something that came up in the assessment. A lot of our, obviously, you don't have to keep up with compliance because laws change every year. But a lot of our railings, like if you take the middle school lobby, for example, there's railings up on the second floor, those are no longer compliant by today's standards. The spacing between the bars, that has all changed. The railings going down the stairs, that has changed. So, those are things that they feel should be, should be taken into consideration to be updated. Next item is the auditorium carpeting, one of our smaller figures, luckily. The wastewater treatment plant, that's still kind of in limbo. We know it needs to be done, but we don't know to what extent the, we have ruled out, I know we've discussed before, going to a Title V field because of our flows. We're too close to being over the limit to go to actually just a regular Title V septic field. So, that's kind of off the board now because our numbers are too close. So, we have to upgrade the plant. The question that still lies within the plant is, to what capacity would it have to be rebuilt? It needs a complete rebuild. However, is it going to serve just a middle-high school? Or if another school is going to go on that site, that would have to be put into the picture. So, the flows would have to be added into that. So...
They did tell us today that they will get back to us on that question as far as, could it be partially reimbursable if we built another school there? Her immediate answer was no, but she said there was some confusing language on the website and that she would, she said she'd get back to me the end of the day. I just checked, but she didn't. So, it'll probably come tomorrow morning. So, we will have a definite answer on that. But in the history of working with MSBA, they haven't experienced any reimbursement. This may be a different case, but she was coming.
We're under Carver rules.
Yeah.
Anything's possible.
So, that's something where, you know, possible MSBA money is, you know, might be there, some matching funds. And also, if I can go back, the roof and the mechanical, there are funds available through MSBA to help with those renovations. Typically, the big three they do are roofs, building envelope, and mechanical or electrical.
And windows.
And windows, yes. You're ME.
The problem with that is they won't let you have two statement of interest active at the same time. So, if we were to apply for reimbursement, it would be at the end of the elementary building project. I don't mean to interrupt you, but they can't, it's possible, but they can't go forward at the same time.
Those figures that you have on the right are post-reimbursement, then? Because as I'm looking, it says 4.8 and 2.5 underneath that.
Correct.
So, the figures at the right would be post-reimbursement.
Yes. Because typically, on, when MSBA helps you on renovation, not renovations, but mechanical, it's about 50% is the matching funds. So, we took the number of the project and cut it in half.
Which, if you can't do that, that seems almost non-feasible because is that something that we're going to be able to postpone that long?
That's why we're bringing this up now. Our hope was in 2006, when Barry was the chair of the School Study Committee, School Needs, we were hoping to have accomplished the elementary school by three years ago. Therefore, when this is becoming critical, we wouldn't be in this situation. But now, we are. And so, that's why it was really great to go ahead and get this architectural engineering studied for us to figure out exactly what was Tier One. But I don't know how we're going to do it.
I mean, I can tell you, the, right now, my assessment, the critical needs, and they are critical, is the roof.
The roof.
The roof is critical. I've dealt with many leaks from last week's snowstorm through coming in this morning and finding ceiling tiles that had fallen in because of leaks.
Well, that's going to deteriorate so much infrastructure, though, eventually, that there's going to be way beyond that.
Yes.
You know?
Yep. You know, we're not, we're not there yet, but eventually, the more water you get in the building, the more, you know, you're susceptible, the mold, the more you are susceptible to damaging computer equipment, electrical equipment. Yeah. And it's not something that, well, go up there and fix the leak. The typical life expectancy of a single ply EDPM roof, I know I've said this before, is 15 to maximum 20 years, if you're lucky. We're on 27 years right now. Yeah.
And wasn't there one summer, Dave, when you started here, where you kind of went up there and sealed it?
There was a product that was put on, yes, that, from another vendor who, it's one of those things, you kind of, I don't want to say live and learn, but the product I would not purchase anymore of it. It actually, I've found has caused some more problems than it actually helped. Yeah. So, that will never go on our roofs again, as long as I'm here.
Which we hope is a long time.
It didn't live up to what it's supposed to. So...
Well, the reason I remember it is because I was just impressed, really, that the effort, above and beyond effort to kind of do it yourself, you know?
Yes. Our guys, maintenance staff, did it.
Yeah, they worked so hard.
Yeah, they did.
But it's almost like, you know, this penny wise, pound foolish philosophy where we're cutting things, but it's ended up costing us more money in the long run.
Yep. So, we, you know, as leaks come and we're chasing them around in different areas, we try to locate them, but it's a point where a lot of our seams are just, it's kind of like the gymnasium floor. It's, things have deteriorated so bad that we, you know, we address seams where we can, and we put new lap seals down. But it's, and the problem with a flat roof is a leak can come out of the ceiling here, but it's actually infiltrating under your rubber membrane anywhere, you know, 100 feet down. And it runs through the flutes, and it comes out, you know, wherever it will, but it's not always directly above.
Some of the problems in the gym floor were caused by roof leaks.
Right.
So... Working with the DPW to try to patch it over the last few years, but it's...
It's to the point where we gotta, you know, we gotta do a larger section, more than just pothole filling.
Parking lot where?
At the transportation.
Transportation.
On Pond Street, yes. Yep.
And I did hear back from our cafeteria director, who did put in a request for a set of double-stack ovens for the, for the back building. Again, these aren't cooking. These are just to keep things warm. And the ones we have there, only, only one of them, we've got a double, but only one part of it works right now. And then, we've got our ongoing, and either Liz or Meredith may want to speak to this one a little bit more detail, of the ongoing technology upgrades.
Well, we do need to go ahead and purchase some tablet devices, which we have determined that the iPads serve our purposes. And we believe that we can finish that and the infrastructure with a second warrant article of $100,000. And then, I would consider us to be at current standard for the buildings. Do you want to add anything?
Sounds good.
How are those handling their first year of usage so far?
Well, you know, we are just now deploying all of them because we had to get the infrastructure in place. But we feel like the department chairs and Scott and a few other people, Meredith, went to a really wonderful iPad summit in Boston. They don't operate here every year. And so, now, we feel like we are getting everybody up to the same speed and use, but they're all ready to go. We sent the iPads home with the teachers over the, over the winter break, and just for them to get really used to them. And I think we're really ready for full deployment right now, and people are very excited about it. We have a teacher we hired from Wareham, who's had one in her classroom, a whole cart for a few years, and so, she's gotten everybody all excited about all this is what you could do. So, I think it's a really good instructional addition, and I can't wait to add them at the elementary school because we just don't have any, we just have one computer lab in the back building and a mobile lab that's about nine years old.
They all know how to use them by then anyways.
Oh, the kids? The kids know how to use them. You know, my six-month-old niece can find her pictures and videos on her mother's iPad in a second, so six months old. So, the kids have no problem with it.
So, that completes FY '15. Want to end it there?
Yeah. And if we can, I think, clearly, Dave, you've brought a lot of large projects to our plate, which, and from, again, just to kind of summarize, we are all on the same page. These are recommendations from the audit that just came through to you in really prioritizing what our needs are. So, I think as we have these discussions now as a committee, like you said, these are some serious red flags that are going to cause deeper issues within our facility and to the students' success, really, that I think we need to start having that discussion to warrant articles and things that potentially, we've got to address this sooner than later. And yes, we've got a building project over here, but again, doing our due diligence, we need to put ourselves in a good position for this, or it's just going to deteriorate beyond repair, and we're building another building, which we're not at that speed either.
Well, and I agree with that. I think that, you know, we're discussing this now, and there's a certain percentage of population that's getting that message, but I think there's a very large percentage of the population that doesn't realize the need there. And if we do procrastinate and we do put off, we're going to end up in that same boat. I really think that a way to communicate these needs now and make sure that people understand that this is a need now, so that, you know, three, four years down the road, when it's major need, that if so, that they're not like, well, why, we didn't know? And, you know, I just really think there needs to be a way to, exactly as you said, we have to, we have to be proactive with this. We're academically being proactive in a lot of ways, but with the infrastructure, we need to start doing the same thing, I think. And we need to at least get together to discuss some kind of plan of how we're going to present that and do something with that.
So, one of the ways is we take this to Capital Outlay to present to their permanent members of Capital Outlay, and then, they have their own discussions, but we also can use our PTOs and whatnot to inform the general public of parents what we...
Well, I think that's kind of my cue, is that the general public really needs to understand the severity of the need right now, so that it's not a shock, as, you know, some may feel if it comes to a much dire need.
I couldn't agree with you more. And it's, even if this is my eighth year here, and even after eight years, it's very difficult for us to communicate with the whole community because we don't, and it's even gotten worse because the Carver reporter doesn't really have an assigned reporter to Carver. I mean, it changes about every three to four weeks. David Smith left. Bobby Sistrunk is gone. Now, we have somebody else, but I bet that will only last two or three weeks. I tried to post our snow day on the website. No one was there to pick up the message. Didn't get on, you know, it was on our website. So, it's a very difficult communication. Many people don't have cable TV. They have satellite. So, even the cable programs, I'm happy to do another cable program. You know, social media is the way that people find out about things. And I have shied away from a Facebook page because they can be so misused. But perhaps to communicate this, we need to go ahead with a Facebook page to talk just about, we can't talk about the elementary school because it's going to be a ballot issue. So, we can't, after we accept it into the pipeline, I can't say anything more about that. I do think people know this.
Yeah. I think that's a clear picture. I think it's what we're adding on to that already sort of daunting task, that people need to realize that this isn't something that can be postponed, unless we end up in the same boat.
I think maybe we need to use social media to get out the word about the, this, I mean, you can see this is a five-year plan. Some of these things have been on here for years.
Exactly, yeah.
And, but, there will, the buck is going to stop with the roof. And, but, there will, the buck is going to stop with the roof and the wastewater treatment plan and, and the gym floor. I mean, it's just, and possibly the track, because it has become a time they're not usable.
Right.
And we've got all these great interests and plenty of kids who wanna do these things, and them here will be stuck, so.
I'd love to see us open up a discussion about some, some ways to maybe try and do something with that to-
Well, and if we could, we'll make sure how, uh, next, next meeting's agenda, that that becomes a, we'll give it its ample time, um, so that we can have that solid discussion, 'cause I, I think we can't be afraid, yes, we have an elementary project on our plate, but we can't be afraid to make this step as well, 'cause these are priorities as well.
Right.
And, and like you said, if these aren't taken care of, we, the plans were there, like, like Liz said, if we had an elementary school, when things were supposed to be done, we'd be on the right track. We're off it now, so we don't wanna continue that track, let, let's right that ship.
Run a new one, yeah.
Right, let, let, let's fix this spot while we continue to work on this one. So I think we need to be dual silo at this point and, and really focus on both. So, um, we'll make sure it's on the agenda for some serious discussion and try to get a good game plan as we move forward on this, 'cause I, I think it's vital.
And if we try to bundle any of these and go for a fifty-fifty re-
Absolutely.
That's, I think, the way to go, really, yeah.
Fifty-fifty reimbursement. The one thing that MSBA looks at is your capital plan and what you have you actually done on your capital plan.
Sure.
If you're not gonna, you, the community hasn't gone forward with any of it, then they're not as eager to help you.
Sure.
They do still make it on need, so, but, that's the first thing they asked us today was, can we have your updated capital plan? They have our last years from when I submitted the SOI, but, um, yes, we'll definitely put this back-
And perhaps, Dave, as you get the final report, um, we can package that all in and that'll help fuel our discussion as well.
We are going with our webs, our website, although it seems new, it's, um, six years old, and the company that provides us, uh, power at CMS schools isn't going out of the school business. However, I can't imagine why, 'cause they've been charging us too much money, I found out, but, um, at the, it is still less than a third of what most people pay, but Meredith and I interviewed, um, a company that can, the initial design will cost about the same, but the upkeep will, we've been paying three to four thousand dollars a year, and we're talking hundreds and not thousands from, um, the companies we've been speaking to. So I think we've, um, the website can be a little more inviting, you know, where we do have school building project up there and we have the capital plan and all that kinda stuff, I think people just give up and go away, they don't really look at it. So, I do think, though, that a good Facebook campaign can be a, a major, everybody has these or something like this, you know, so we could, we could really-
I just think the swiftness of that, like Facebook, you can communicate like the wind.
Right.
I, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, Meredith and I'll be Facebook ladies now.
I've never used it before. While we're on that topic, can I jump in for a sec? Is that okay?
Yes.
It, it just seems a very appropriate opening. I, I skipped it the first time in the sake of time, but now it's come up again, and I just wanted to share briefly, um, we have our mobilizing the community meetings, and we have created a new Facebook page, and I was going to bring this up at the end of the night tonight under reports from the school committee. However, I've just been sitting here briefly looking, there was a post yesterday by someone about some hypodermic needles in town, so I put a comment and said, "This is a great time to invite you guys to like the Facebook page," and it went from zero likes yesterday to forty-nine. I sat here and I pressed the invite button and posted our next meeting, which is February fourth at six-thirty, right, Scott?
That's correct.
Um, on the page, from forty-nine likes to seventy-three at eight-thirty-seven, and just a few moments ago, it was already ninety-four likes, and eleven people have already seen the meeting. So, very powerful way to quickly communicate information and get people on board, and it was just a perfect opening to say that, so, thank you.
That's a good picture to drive people to come to the meeting.
Right.
I also plug that, um, I know I'm gonna wanna think of the district using Twitter, but there are districts out there where, uh-
The superintendent.
Superintendent, principal, they have thousands of followers. If I was to tweet right now, we're getting a new trap in Turfield, you would leave, you would get home on your phone, I guarantee you that.
Absolutely.
The kids have it.
Yep.
And the kids will spread it faster than the parents.
You bet.
So I have like two-hundred-and-fifty kids following me, and it's mostly scores and updates, and I have the press from different towns following for, it's become a tool for athletics, so they don't call you anymore about scores and updates. You have the Herald following you, the Globe, Ledger, and all these organizations and sports groups, so, um-
I was tweeting way back in two thousand and eight when we went to Spain, yeah.
So, a- again, it's a, it's different, it's different pockets. I mean, the Booster Club has a webpage, a Facebook page, and they have like three hundred followers, so it's different pockets of different-
Well, it's interesting to see, yeah, my sister, who's a high school teacher, teacher uses it to get her homework assignments out, and that's how she reaches her students, so there's a lot of applications now that are being used in the educational field for all these social media pieces, so, uh, it's, it's interesting.
So we'll work on it. If, you're right, we can't let this lie dormant.
I just hate seeing it year after year, and it, it's just rhetoric and conversation, you know?
Yeah.
Well, we can't, we can't afford it anymore.
Uh, I know, but I, I think the more awareness there is to it, the, the better off.
No, I mean, we can't afford to wait.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So, thank you, David.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Now the building update.
Yeah.
Building update, I'll keep this quick. Um, a few things, we actually finally just received our new interior security doors at the high school, middle school, main offices. Now I am waiting, so the, the physical doors are installed, I'm waiting for our electronic security company to come tie those in, so those should be functionable fairly soon. Uh, I have picked up the equipment for our new badging system, which will also become every staff member's electronic key. So I have formatted the new cards and do, very soon should be able to start printing then and getting them into circulation. I'm waiting for the company to come to help assist me with the software, is how do I delete the old passes and as efficiently as possible get the new ones in, in the system. So that's where we are with that. A couple of quick things, um, so far, we're almost into mid-January, heating-wise in the buildings, we're doing okay, um, knock on wood. Uh, we had, I came in last Saturday, a week ago Saturday, to a flood in the middle school. Uh, we had a hot water coil burst in one of the classrooms. Luckily, I don't think it had gone too long, we had water in three classrooms in a hallway, but we were able to do everything in staff, um, 'cause I had a full staff in for snow removal, so we got everything cleaned up, got the water isolated, had the humidifiers running all weekend with no issues, so that was taken care of, handled in-house. Uh, one thing I just found out this afternoon from our contractor over at the Ur and Kate Washburn building, who up there doing roof maintenance and on the rooftops, I believe he said it was the unit for the IMC, which does the core area, um, main offices and a couple surrounding classrooms, it's two supply fans, one supply fan broke apart. Unfortunately, when it broke apart, it also ruptured, uh, an AC coil, so that's got some expense to it. So I told him to get a materials list, send me a quote, so once I have that-
And they'll have to manufacture the parts.
Well, that's, it's an older unit, it's not one of our oldest units, but it's an older unit, so we'll see where we are. So, that's the buildings update, sorry to be the bearer of bad news.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Dave.
As of, one of our hundreds of unfunded mandates, we're, we're, we're going forward with a new one, another one, and we do this every seven years, and I asked Karen to come and tell us about the program, coordinated program review.
I'll just pass these out, they were stapled backwards, so that's why they're folded over, but, so the, um, state, um, it's a, it's actually a six-year cycle, the state does a coordinated program review, where, um, this year we have a full, the review looks at, um, compliance with regulations related to civil rights, special ed, and English language education. So the state'll come down and look at all our procedures and compliance with that. So we're in our full year this year, well, three years from now will be in a mid-cycle year, and then in two thousand twenty, we'll be in another full year. The state identifies a chairperson from the DESE, um, for each district, so Dory Smith is our, um, chairperson, and she'll be onsite in March, um, from the twenty-fourth to the twenty-seventh. This year, they've changed the format a little, so it started with a self-assessment, um, which was an all-in online self-assessment, and part of the purpose of that is they want the process to be more supportive and less of a kind of audit, "I got you, I found your mistakes" kind of process. So, last January actually started, Meredith and I went and attended the training for the web-based self-assessment, and then by May, um, with the help of the administrative team and a lot of help from Ann Marie and Marie, we uploaded a lot of documents and proof of different things and self-assessed our, um, pers- our policies and made any changes that we needed to, which is part of the point of that, is to give you a chance to update everything. Um, and we submitted all that in May of last year. Now, this month, DESE, Dor Smith will be coming down, um, I think it's next week or, well, January twenty-first, she'll be coming down and, um, doing an orientation with us to just get us prepared for the onsite visit, um, and then in March, we'll have the onsite visit.
It is both civil rights, compliance, and special ed.
Yep, civil rights, special ed, and English language education.
Yeah.
Then they'll do, they'll do a, um, final report in which, um, they'll rate each of the compliance criterion that they reviewed, um, as commendable, implemented, implementation in progress, partially implemented or not implemented or not applicable. After those findings, any findings that are in the not implemented or partially implemented category, um, would require corrective action by the district in which that's then monitored, um, by the DESE. So basically, um, that's what they're doing, and the, um, in here you'll see, there is, one of the pieces of it is, a lot of it's looking, for special ed, a lot of it's looking at student files. So they will pull, we've already pulled a bunch of files and checked them for different kind of timeline compliances and different things, and then they'll pull more files when they come, they'll interview staff, um, they'll, and then they'll do a visit of all the special ed classrooms and spaces, and I gave you a sheet that shows what they'll be looking for in that, in that visit of spaces, um, just so you can kinda see the type of thing they'll be looking for. The elementary school will probably not-
Will fail.
Yeah, we won't, we won't be compliant with several areas.
We failed, we failed seven years ago because of the fiscal condition of the building, and we got a very helpful letter from them to take to MSBA, but none of these things have drastically improved, so we'll fail that.
Um, and then on the back of that is the list of the interview, that, you know, people that they will be looking for us to assign, people for them to come down and interview, so you can just see all the different people that they will be interviewing about our civil rights and special ed and English language education processes and policies. The other piece that is in there that I had to share with you is, um, four weeks before the onsite visit, um, we need to send out a press release to the community to just let them know what's happening and to allow for anyone in the community that wants to be interviewed to have the opportunity to call in and say they'd like to be interviewed. So, that's, there's a, um, form letter that they give you that we've just filled in with our information, so that'll go out, um, probably mid-February. And that's pretty much it, if anyone has any questions about the coordinated program review.
It's just, I think it's better if you hear it before we do it than just the results, you know, so we just, uh, just give you a little update. Thank you, Karen.
You're welcome.
She does a marvelous job at everything, and she does a particularly good job with this, she and Meredith. It also gives us a time to look at our district curriculum accommodation plan, which we've been working on, which is good to look at because some things have really changed with technology over the seven years, so we, we did that as well. Meredith, January professional development day, which is coming up this Friday?
Yep. So, in compliance with, um, our collective bargaining agreement, teachers this Friday have something called the Teacher Choice Day, and what they do is they submit a proposal to our district-wide professional development committee stating what they'll be doing to kind of further their professional development, and, um, there are a number of different options that they can choose from that we provide, or additionally, they can work either solo or in teams or in professional learning communities on specific curriculum or assessment projects. So, we are gearing up for a great day. Some of the offerings that have, um, a high number of enrollees from the district, Karen will be offering a half-day training on working with students with, um, Asperger's and autism, and then at our elementary, there will be a half-day, um, training on positive behavioral supports and intervention. There will also be a district-wide half-day training on something called "I've Got the Power," which is classroom management to increase student engagement and make sure that every learner is engaged in learning. I'll be running a training on iPads for higher-order thinking and trying to make sure that we're infusing critical thinking skills and research and that sort of thing, um, by use of the iPads. There will also be, um, some work with small group differentiation in math and making sure that teachers are meeting every learner where they're at and getting them to where they need to be, um, under the rigor of the new Massachusetts frameworks. And then some of our team projects that will be occurring, we have teachers that will be working on common assessments, both with Twenty-First Century Learning Skills and the NIASC, um, requirements, and then also at the elementary level, working on the math common assessments. We also have teachers that will be doing unit work and trying to digitalize, um, some of their forecasts and their pacing guides and their assessments, putting those into our online grading program at the middle high school. And we also have, um, some teachers that will be going out and doing site visits with other programs that are also high-performing and being able to collaborate with teachers in other districts who happen to have school that day and they'll be doing observations. So one of the requirements under this process is when teachers apply and have to state what they're doing, they have to link it to their professional development goals, and under the new educator evaluation system, their SMART goals for the year, and then additionally, there needs to be a product that comes out of it, and sometimes the product is put into our district shares folder so that other people can access that, sometimes the product is something that's utilized in the classroom with students. So it will be a meaningful and exciting day.
Thank you. Um, I think it's important that parents know it's sometimes a inconvenience to have lack of school for children, but it has been pretty successful when we pair it with a long weekend anyway, 'cause families can plan an extra day, but the teachers are very engaged and very productive, um, learning, it's really important that we give them some time, so this is their choice day, but we provide it with some choices, so that works out. Thank you very much, Meredith. I have a request to, if, to see if the school committee would entertain to move the April fourteenth meeting to April seventh, because I have a personal conflict, so, um, I didn't know with this far advanced if you could move the meeting from the fourteenth to the seventeenth, it would help me, I've been here eight years, I don't think I've ever asked you to do this, but-
Did you say the seventh or the seventeenth?
The seventh, remove it from the fourteenth to have it one week earlier.
Okay.
If that works, I'll accept a motion to amend the date.
I'll make a motion to amend the date from the fourteenth to April seventh, two thousand fourteen.
Motion a second, any discussion, does that work for everybody?
It works for me.
Enough heads up. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm very grateful, thank you very much. And then we have a request to recycle from technology, and I think Meredith can answer any questions you have about the list.
Is that a hard drive, the top part there?
And their actual computer systems.
Those are computers, they're desktops, that, um, can't be upgraded.
Right.
So, the ones that, that could be upgraded, we, um, went through the process of trying to purchase more RAM, 'cause we're trying to migrate from our current operating system to Windows Seven, which I know is not the most current, but it's the one that we'll be able to, um, to test on and to get the most number of computers to be compliant with. A lot of our computers won't support Windows Eight, so, and then, um, I mentioned the cathode ray tube monitors before, our current high school seniors were in preschool when those were purchased. And then we also have, um, some damaged or irreplaceable monitors, and then you'll notice that there are some projectors that we're asking to retire, and that's because when we purchased them in two thousand and five, the cost of the replacement bulbs is more expensive than the cost of just getting a new projector that will last a lot longer.
So we need a motion.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for the technology department request to recycle.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, it is unanimous.
And then, um, last, we said we got, um, a grant to, um, have install visitor management system, in partnership with the town, the school's got the grant, uh, so we have to vote to accept the money, the ten thousand dollars.
Great. Do we have a motion to accept the ten thousand, ten thousand dollars from MIAA?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the ten thousand dollars from MIAA.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
Uh, on that, it, it talks about June fifteenth, does that mean it has to be installed and all?
Must be paid for. Must be paid for.
Just paid for by June 15th.
But it will be all installed by then. No problem. It'll be installed in a week or two if we get our.
See, what, if I could just jump in for a second. What this is about is we've, as we said, we've got, after the badge system that Dave talked about earlier, it leaves us $5,000 in our original capital article. And in order to do these, the visitor stations, they're each $5,000. So we've got $5,000 left in the capital article and the $10,000 grant will round out our project.
Great.
And what this is, is you have to, you have to order them, you have to install them, and then the invoice will, will pay $5,000 for one, and then the invoice actually goes to Maya, and they will, they will forward the $10,000 check to the vendor.
Okay. Thank you, Pat.
But because it enhances us, we have to vote for it.
So that's Washburn Middle School and High School.
Yeah. We'll have to read.
Yes.
Sounds good. Let's see, we've had discussion, seeing no further. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any votes? It is unanimous. Make this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat, Dave and all, Mike and all, Meredith and all those that presented this evening. With that, I'll open it up for any reports from the school committee this evening.
I don't have a report, but I have a question.
Sure.
And I apologize for this because I missed last month's meeting. And in reviewing the notes from last month's meeting in preparation for today, it reminded me, I understand that the health aide at the elementary school retired and that there was some concern about that, and I don't know if it's appropriate to discuss here because of, I'm not sure, so tell me if we need to discuss it separately, but.
If it's a personnel question, we should probably just talk later on, and then we'll bring it if we need to make any decisions.
Okay, okay. I just heard there were some concerns about that, so I want to make sure I didn't forget to go back and ask. So if we could do that and bring it up again next time, that'd be great.
That's good. Thank you, Paula. James?
Hi, just, you know, after, after everything we've discussed tonight budgetary-wise and the progress with the MSBA, this is going to be an interesting year for us. And I hope those all who showed involvement and interest remain that way and stay involved and stay active in what's happening because we definitely got a big road ahead of us with a lot to do between the two schools. And it's nice to hear the interest, but let's try and keep it rolling, too.
Yes, thank you, James. Eric?
I didn't say this at the time because Patrick was so eloquent about it, but I did, when I saw that letter in my packet, I was very sad for the school system, but I was very happy for the individual, Pat. But I just remember when you did come back, Pat, and I met you, and you just brought this great calm, calming presence to the position and really, I think, helped, you know, smooth over the relationships with the town and all that stuff. So I appreciate your, the recent tenure here, and I just want to thank you. I'm sure we'll be thanking you again over the next few months, but I just wanted to recognize that tonight.
Early enough.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything for us.
I have one announcement.
One announcement?
My girls' basketball team, Mike thinks they're his, but they're really close to my heart, is having a pack the gym night on the 31st. And there's going to be all kinds of fun, prizes and music and basketball. So pack the gym on January 31st.
January 31st.
Same night as senior lock-in.
Same night as senior lock-in.
Same night as senior lock-in, great. And this is good. I would just like to echo Mary's thoughts for Pat, I think in the short time that I've had a chance to work with you, get to know you a little bit.